Thank you candidates for coming. Just a couple of notes. We're going to have a statement read by Rory Graves' representative because she had an illness in the family and wasn't able to attend tonight. And Karen Chase's opponent is also not here, so we'll just, we'll have the representation that we have and may be good for being here, so thank you so much. We will have one minute opening statements with the exception of, and I forgot to ask, is it Real?
Real, yes.
Thank you. Real is going to be opening, opening with a statement from Rory because she can't be here and then we're going to allow him to leave because we didn't think it was fair to put him on the spot. Well, come on, stay, it's your name.
I was, uh, I was it.
Actually you. But, you know, I, you know, it's probably...
Maybe we should ask Rory.
Anyway, you, you go first, you're free to go after your two minutes. So, and then from there, we will start with opening statements, one minute opening statements for each one of the candidates. Then we have questions that we're going to ask. We also have one question that listed about the audience member as well that we'll pull into that. And then two minute closing statements. So, that is where we'll go and we will start with Real if you want to have your statement for Rory Graves. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Real Johnson. I grew up in this district, I actually went to Oak Heights Elementary, Alworth Middle School. I ended up transferring districts to Mariner High School and Wapataill for reasons I'll get into later. But Rory is running for school board and I'm proud to represent her because she's the right person for the job because I've known her since I moved back here to Washington in 2016. She was on the board for the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, which passed to gun safety initiatives here. I was one fielder. I led that initiative as a field director back in 2016, 1491. So I've seen her passion firsthand, I've seen what she's doing, done, I've seen her, she's actually gathered signatures, done the work, you know, the real grassroots organization to get things done. She even did it for an initiative that I also ran, which was Initiative 940 for Police Accountability. She has a real social justice mind and wants to really look out for students, especially has a passion for it because she has three students here in this district as well. I think she, we need more people like her on school that bring that perspective as a working mom that wants to volunteer and do as much for community, but also has kids in this district that she has to take care of. What she's doing tonight by staying home, prioritizing her children and taking care of three sick kids right now because all you notice is fall and there's a flu going around and a lot of, a little lot of sickness going around, which she is sick as well. So I hope that, you know, I can suffice and maybe provide some perspective, but just here I can at least comment on what kind of person she is and why she's running because even though we have these budget cuts around statewide, but like we cannot be sitting here and trying to figure out how much we can sacrifice our teachers for. Teachers are, are, they're, 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 they spend hours upon hours with our kids every day, they're our babysitters, you know, you know, they're caretakers, they're educators and even around the whole country, especially, and this is a prime example, what happened in this district was we're just willing to sacrifice teachers the way we are. It just shows like how much we're not really challenged about, you know, concerned about talking about education. We always talk about economic growth and expanding and doing all this stuff, bringing light rail here and growing our, our city, but we don't talk about that in our schools. We don't talk about growing our education. All we're talking about is contain, how can we contain or maintain these kids and we, you know, we need to talk about growing our education, that's a vision that Rory has. And she's bringing that with perspective of how well it's going to benefit our kids because she is actually a working mom, you know, has part of the working family with three kids at school, just like many of us are here in the school in this room. So that's why I'm here to represent, that's why I'm putting my, my support behind her. As I should live and move in this district, I'm going to be voting, I'm proud to be voting for Rory this year and I hope you all get to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you're going to stick around?
Yes.
Great. I forgot to mention one very important thing. Dustin is the timekeeper and so he will be making a, would you demonstrate?
I'll raise my hand when you have 15 seconds left and I'll put it back. And then I'll, then I'll raise it again and just hold it up when your time is, when your time is up.
And if we don't see you, you'll jump up and down.
Rory will jump up and down.
Thank you very much. All right, well, we'll start with, and we're going to be popping, we have this kind of nice little system where we each come up here and ask a question and take turns. So I'm going to start with the first one and this will be for Ms. Chase and as...
Will you give statements?
Oh, we'll give statements.
I guess I'm in a hurry to get out of here.
I can jump right in, I can like hold it in.
Would you please start with your opening statements and I will just let you, you've been doing this, I know you've been every night, right? So just go from one to the next and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
We ready?
Go.
Oh, wonderful. My name's Karen Chase and thank you for hosting this forum this evening. I am running for reelection to the Edmonds School Board District One. I am a proud product of the Washington State Public Education System with, starting at Roosevelt High School and then moving on to the University of Washington for my undergraduate degree in Biology and graduate degree in Public Administration. My son is a recent graduate from Mollick Terrace High School. And I'm just so proud of him, what can I say? The, the last four years, I have been serving as your legislative representative and in these challenging times as our school district is facing with our budget, it's my passion has been to bring the perspective that for those that are making decisions at the 30,000 foot level on bringing the perspective on how this is affecting the classroom. Because all those things we need to do is that policy decisions are impacting our students every single day and often that is lost because the folks making decisions are too far from the classroom. And that is one thing I'm very passionate about. Oh my goodness, really?
Yeah.
Well, we'll talk about this more. We've got lots of budget stuff to talk about, lots of other things, so I look forward to the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you also for hosting this forum. My name's Gary Noble and I've been involved in education for over 30 years. In the last 16, I've served on the school board. Edmonds is a great school district and I'm proud of the recent accomplishments, which include we've standardized test scores, which exceed state averages, we've reduced our kindergarten to grade three class sizes down to an average of 20 students per classroom, and we've maintained financial integrity with balanced budgets through both funding decreases and the uneven increases of the McCleary decision. My 30 years experience in education started when my kids entered kindergarten in this school district. I was a PTA officer in elementary school. I tutored math in middle school. In high school, I was a parent rep on the Loominwood High School Instructional Council and also chaperoned many, many field trips for the science and band, science club and band. I was chairman of the District Citizens Planning Committee at that time and I'm currently a trustee on the, for the Foundation for Edmonds School District. I believe I have the experience, knowledge and passion to continue to represent you on the school board. And I'll also note that as this is a nonpartisan position, I have not accepted campaign support from any political or special interest organization. Thank you.
So thank you to our hosts and to Teresa for being our moderator tonight. And thank you all for coming and taking time out of your day to become more informed voters. So I'm Lisa Honeywell and I'm running for Edmonds School Board in District Five. I graduated from Dartmouth College with a Bachelor of Arts in 1988 and I'm a lifelong learner who wants to inspire that similar level of learning in all students and staff in our school district. I'm a parent of three children with my youngest currently a senior at Meadowdale High School. Professionally, I have worked with youth at First Lutheran Church Richmond Beach and Trinity Lutheran Church Lynnwood. And I've got designed educational programs for adults in two trade associations and for the past 12 years have been doing organizational change management and district-wide training at St. Homish County PUD. I bring a fresh perspective to the board, having never been a teacher or administrator in the school district. I'm a collaborative leader who will seek partnerships and facilitate consensus. I believe in community engagement and will seek to provide increased opportunities for transparency. I come to the position with an open mind. I, I don't have all the answers, but I'm ready to do the hard work needed to make good data-driven decisions. I look forward to talking with you more this evening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Kaidems and I'm running for the Edmonds School Board representing District Five. I want to thank all the sponsoring organizations and all of you for coming out tonight. I've spent my entire career working in education, trying to improve educational opportunities for all students, no matter their backgrounds. I've worked in the areas of early childhood education, special education, math and science education, research and evaluation and more. Most recently, I've spent almost 20 years working in the Edmonds School District as a program director in the Student Learning Department. I have a PhD in Educational Psychology from Northwestern University and as part of that program, among other things, I learned how to ask the right questions, how to analyze critical issues and how to find credible evidence to really inform decisions. I'm also the proud mom of two Edmonds graduates. I have been a band mom, a sports mom, a theater mom and the mom of an LGBTQ student. I know how it feels when my child's learning needs are not being met and I know the immense joy and pride when I see them achieve amazing success in school and in life and I want that for all our students and all our families. Thank you.
All right, let's try this again. Ms. Chase?
Yes.
As the school board director, how would you address the concerns that no matter how many levies voters approve, there never seems to be enough money to meet the district's needs? How can voters be assured their money is being spent wisely?
Well, two things. The school district budget is a values document. Budgets are where you spend your money reflects the values and it reflects the values of the community and that is why the community is invited to participate in the budget process so that you can know that the decisions on where we allocate the limited funds that we have are, are fiscally sound and directed so that every single student will have the equity of opportunity to meet their educational needs. And so how do that, so by participating, that is the best way for the public and the taxpayers to see how the, you know, where the money is being spent. The other part of the question was, there never seems to be enough money. That's a little bit of a loaded question because right now with, with the recent funding, recent state changes, we've, they've changed the way that money is driven towards the school districts. And with one hand, the, the state gave us money and with the other hand, they took it away. So what we need actually is some reform and bold leadership in the legislature, legislature to make sure that we are fully funding education, not just, not just kind of this patchwork quilt of how they are funding right now because it is, it is by no means adequate. But I do invite everyone to participate in the budget process so you can feel confident that we're being fiscally, good fiscal stewards of the taxpayer resources.
All right, next question for Mr. Noble. Name your top priorities should you be reelected as school board director?
I'll give you two top priorities and one I will talk about a little more extensively. My first priority right now is to hire a high-quality superintendent and we've started that process. Our superintendents are retiring at the end of this year and we've started that process by hiring a consulting service to guide us through this process. And we have our first regular meeting with that consulting service later this month. The other thing that I think is so important is passing our bond. We have a $600 million bond and an operational and technology levy is this February. What's important about this is we structured it so that there's no increase in taxes. We, this is, we're able to do this because we have several bonds from previous elections that we are now retiring so we can run this bond and that was a critical factor for us. We did not want to increase anybody's taxes. This bond is really important to us. It does two major items. First, it builds us a middle school, which allows us to convert to a six, seven, eight middle school configuration. This is consistently state standards, which are the six, seven, eight middle school standards. Our poor elementary teachers right now, sixth grade elementary teachers are trying to teach, for instance, a sixth grade, a middle school science curriculum in a sixth grade elementary class. Also relieve the overcrowding problem of over 40 portables in elementary schools by moving fifth grade up to sixth. And the, the other thing is it helps us replace our 70s era crumbling schools and we are replacing College Place Middle School, Beverly Elementary, Oak Heights Elementary and finishing Spruce. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Real, so do you want to go ahead and answer on behalf of Rory?
Sure.
Answer questions?
Sure.
Okay. So this question will be for you then. Name your top priorities should you be reelected as school board director?
I don't think I know of a, sorry, not me, but yeah.
Not you, Rory, yeah.
I don't think Rory will do. And it's not fair for me to get into specifics of her policies because I'm not her. But there's a, there's kind of like a philosophy or just a whole new perception that needs to be taken with this because you see this thing, what, you know, what, you know, my previous speaker was saying about these things about changing schools, moving students around by giving new portables and stuff. I didn't mention anything about the teachers to, to teach these kids in these overcrowded classrooms. And that's one, one thing we knew, like when teachers, when teachers are overcrowded in their classrooms, there's too many students in the classroom, graduation rates drop. That's a fact nationwide. So when you see like, when you talk about priorities, and that's not a priority when you're speaking, then you just see what the philosophy of the perception is and how those things have changed. And we've been dealing with that with someone who's in 30 years of education, you know, those kinds of things need to change. And that's why Rory took this, you know, took this on her, upon herself to run, to change our perception and really prioritize what our children are receiving in terms of education, where our teachers are provided to provide that education so there's actual education going on, not worried about construction, not worried about the certain bonds and also, because like we don't make, people don't make money off that. You know what makes benefits from those rebuilding new schools is contractors and developers, not the students and not our kids. What goes on in that classroom is a lot more important, you know, what happens and how fancy and how new and how, how nice that classroom is.
Ms. Honeywell, how do you engage and empower citizens to participate in the school board decision-making process?
Thank you. So one of the things that I do actually at St. Homish County PUD is I help people prepare for change. And to do that, my, my, my main message is no surprises, right? If you, so, so what I do is I work with folks to prepare them and, and so as a result, I believe fully in community engagement because that allows us to make the decisions together. So it's shared decision-making. So to that end, I perceive, I, I feel like what I, the steps I would take would be to have public meetings and invite parents to come, educators to come and give feedback. I like to hold focus groups actually where we bring in folks and we actually literally sit for 90 minutes and we discuss issues and, and really delve into the issues. I also think it's important to have executive interviews with things, with administrators, making certain that you're talking to the administrators, the principals, as well as the teachers, so that again, we make shared decisions. I recall a time in approximately 2009 when there was a need to cut the budget at the school district and they did a great thing. They invited folks, parents such as myself, to come to the schools and there was a form that listed out a whole variety of cuts that could be made and we were asked to cut $11 million. We had to do it ourselves, we as a parent. And we had to put our, and those were compiled and that went and sent the information to the school board. I think that's the type of engagement we need to make good decisions together. Thank you.
This question is for Ms. Kaidems. How would you work with district staff to encourage and promote fairness and equity for all of the district students?
Thanks Rory. One of my main issues in my campaign, a campaign is a concern with lack of equity, that students from various groups, the marginalized groups, from my having talked to parents and talking with kids, are not all getting equitable opportunity of access to services and opportunities across the district depending on their school. So I think working with the staff, we also have to reach out to our kids and our teachers and our parents. And this is part of the shared decision-making that should be going on and the more transparent communication that should be going on in the district and ask kids about what kinds of opportunities they're seeking and are they able to get it at their school? What is the kind of treatment that they're getting at their schools? Are they getting the same kind of advice for colleges and applications and other kinds of post-secondary activities that kids need to be participating in depending on the group that they're in? I think that can be done through student surveys. I think it can be done by talking to teachers as well. I think it's really important to find out directly from the kids if they feel like they're not being treated equitably. I know that the, the district has a, a major equity push. They have given a lot of training in culturally responsive practices to district-level administrators and principals, but not to the people who work directly with the kids and I think that's something that also has to be addressed. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Noble, as a school board director, how would you address the concerns that no matter how many levies voters approve, there seems to be enough money to meet the district's needs? And how can voters be assured their money is being spent wisely?
I think one thing people don't realize is that our budget or our funding is so highly regulated and it is totally capped by state law. So we, what we ask the local voters to fund for us is exactly what state law allows us to do, not a penny more. Right now, the cap is $2,500 per student. That's how much people pay to our operations levy to help us and not a penny more. I think we need to assure the public that we are using that money wisely. There was a lot of publicity this year about the, the teacher reductions. It actually was not as people really thought it was. We, we sent release notices, only 19 teachers on May 15th, that's before we knew any retirements. And by the end of August, we had offered the jobs back to all but four. And that's a very minuscule amount of our 1,500 certificated teachers. But the bigger problem that we have right now is the regionalization policy the state has, which pays for our teachers. And I will talk about that next time.
Same question to Mr. Johnson, did you need me to repeat it?
Sure.
Okay. As a school, or speaking on behalf of a school board director, how would you address the concerns that no matter how many levies voters approve, there can never seems to be enough money to meet the district's needs? How can voters be assured their money is being well spent?
We need to just have a new conversation on what these levies should prioritize because every time I see levies, and this happens statewide and nationwide, it's always on building things, building buildings, new schools, material things that we, that we prioritize for these levies because we can see it, we can see the money working, so it's easy to sell. And like I said before, is these new schools, is like if we build these nice and fancy new schools and put money towards that, well, we don't have good enough or enough teachers in these schools and it doesn't benefit our students. So I've never really seen a levy, I can't recall the time when I seen levy to go to actually directly hire more teachers. Every time I see a levy is to build municipal construction and someone makes profit off that too. So we need to have a whole new different conversation and perception and presentation when we give to the voters on what money is going to because what we don't see, instead of seeing a nice new building or nice new additions to our current schools, we need to see nice new forms of curriculums, education that levies can actually pay for that we never prioritize that. So these are the kinds of things I think we need to communicate to voters, to the school board and come to meetings, we can talk about that. That can actually help push it out to the rest of the neighborhood because a lot of people don't come to these schools, which means we need more participation and we need those ideas from you folks like, you know, like you don't really see people talking about these things. Bring those ideas to school board, then we can actually start some action because the, because school board people aren't going to be able, school directors aren't going to be able to think of all the ideas themselves. We need your help too.
Next question for Ms. Honeywell. Name your top priorities should you be elected as a school board director?
Okay, thank you. Well, number one thing would be, as Gary mentioned, is we need to hire a new superintendent. That'd be first up on my agenda. In addition, I really have a passion for helping our homeless students. So I'd really like to look for new pathways. I'd like to pursue, you know, we had, there was an effort to work with the rodeo inn and to potentially have that, that hotel service, a place for homeless families and it didn't end up to work out, but that's the type of thing I'd like to continue to pursue and see how we can support our, our homeless families. I do feel it's important to pass the 2020 bond. I had the opportunity to walk through every elementary and middle school as a part of the Facilities and Bond Committee this, for 2020. And I've seen the fact that we have kids having to study, have a peer educator and a student in the closet space. And I've seen the fact that we have 41 portables that don't have running water and that's hard for a third grader to be in all day and then potentially have to go outside to the main building to use the restroom. So I think, so first, I would hire a superintendent, second, I would pass the bond and I'm really excited about blueprint 2025. I'm thrilled to see the work that the current board has done and I'm excited to really start navigating this global readiness and equity of opportunity priorities that they've set. Thank you.
Ms. Kaidems, how would you engage and empower citizens to participate in the school board decision-making process?
So about 30 years ago, the district developed jointly with their teachers association and other staff groups and parent groups, something called the shared decision-making process. It's a very powerful strategy and its main point is that whoever the stakeholders are who are going to be impacted by any important decision, have input into that decision. Unfortunately, very recently, it doesn't seem that that process is being, has been being used on a consistent basis. So I would say we need to make sure that that's used very consistently for important decisions. There also used to be, and Gary mentioned, he was on it, the CPC, the Community, the Citizens Planning Committee. They consisted of a representative from each of our schools that came regularly and knew what was going on, was told what was going on and they told the school board and district leadership what was going on and there was this nice give and take so that things like the right at school decision, which is a perfect example of poor decision-making, poor shared decision-making and poor communication, was the before and after school program that was taken away from, brought to schools, taking away local versions of that program without parent input. That wouldn't have happened if the CPC or a version of that were back in process. So I think there are a number of strategies.
All right, this question, and this is for Ms. Chase. How would you work with district staff to encourage and promote fairness and equity for all of the district students?
So did you know that when I became, when I got on the Edmonds School Board four years ago, the district became a majority children of color district? And what I see, and I'm very proud of that fact, and one of the challenges we've got that I see and what I hear from students and staff, and that the students do not see themselves reflected in either leadership or staffing and their teachers. And that is a, is a specific focus and equity issue that we have because as you, as, if you do not see yourself reflected in leadership and teaching positions, you're going to have a different, a different kind of educational experience. And so one of the things that we need that is daylighting this is talking about how when we have a majority white people in front of these students, how do we change that? And to change that, we need to have a collaborative, we need to be talking about it. And so what we're doing right now is in each building, we're having equity teams. And these equity teams highlight the issues that are more, that our historically marginalized populations are facing and that is, that is the first step, is to have, starting the conversations in the building with staff and also including students.
This question is for Ms. Honeywell. As a school board director, how would you address the concerns that no matter how many levies voters approve, there never seems to be enough money to meet the district's needs? And how can voters be assured their money is being spent wisely?
So as I mentioned earlier, I've worked in two churches and I've worked in two trade associations and I work at the PUD. All of these are nonprofit and not-for-profit organizations, so I understand what it is to have money be tight. So I would say our first, my first effort would be just focus on prioritization. We have to spend our money wisely, just like we would do at home. And, but I would, the way I would spend the money that I do have would be to focus on the kids. And that means that every dollar that I, every dollar that I can is going directly to kids in the classroom and that means teachers and supplies for them and their activities. And when we do have to cut and when we do have to deal with difficult issues, I do feel that community engagement is the way to help prioritize, help us cut where we have to cut based upon the community's involvement and the parents telling us, helping us tell. But I also think it's important... But I also think it's important that throughout all of this, through the changes we might have to navigate, we need to continue to provide multiple pathways to graduation and to learning, so that we don't narrow down and lose some of the beautiful features we have at the Edmonds School District. College in the classroom, running start, online learning, Snow While, all of those need to help us, need to be kept in place so that we can continue, continue to meet the needs of our students. Thank you.
Next question for Ms. Cadence. Name your top priorities should you be elected as a school board member.
Thank you. So I see both short-term priorities and longer-term priorities. This is a four-year term. So in the first few months of being a school board member, yes, getting an outstanding leader to be our new superintendent and getting the bond and levy passed in February. But let's think about long-term. There are three very large issues that I think are important in the district right now that need to be addressed. One is the district has no measurable goals. And any of you who have worked for an organization of any type or even work for yourself, know you have to have measurable goals in order to budget appropriately, to monitor your progress against those goals, to make adjustments as necessary, to know whether or not your resources are being spent effectively. So that is one priority. Blueprint 2025 does have goals in it or measurable outcomes, but it lacks any discussion about follow-up, monitoring the progress, et cetera. A second issue that's really important that I would definitely make a high priority is ensuring equity, that all kids are getting equitable services, no matter if they're English language learners, if they're children of color, if they're LGBTQ, if they're homeless, immigrant, refugee, whatever, they all need to have equitable services, access to services. And the third area that I've mentioned is communication and the use of the shared decision-making process and having that put into place. Thank you.
Ms. Chase, how will you engage and empower citizens to participate in the school board decision-making process?
Oh, that is an excellent question, because as a matter of fact, that is one of my goals. If I ever get that question, one of the top goals is for community and citizen participation. Community meeting, parents, businesses, students, all of the above. We have sent out, we have found that sending surveys is one way to access and engage folks, but honestly, people have very busy lives, and going out into the community with forums is a more effective way to engage people to go into where they are. And so that is, that would be the top priority, is to make sure that we are having a presence of the school district in community forums, in giving you coffee talks. We can go to where busy parents are. Why don't we go and have a quick forum at some of the sports events? We can have talk to a school board member, talk to your, talk to your teacher while there's a break in the basketball game. We've got to make it easier for busy parents and students to participate in this process, because after all, it is your school district.
All right, this question is for Mr. Noble. How would you work with district staff to encourage and promote fairness and equity for all of the district's students?
Well, that is such a multi-tiered issue. We started out by passing one of the first equity policies in the Hopeview, Des Moines area, and that policy that we wrote has been become a model for other school districts. That sets the overall mood or ideas for the district. Then we've trained a lot of people in a lot of equity awareness, including like kind of doing institutional racism, which I went to. But that still just raises the awareness. What happens down in the weeds is we have kids that do not have equity of opportunity. And they have, they'll have it for hundreds of reasons. I mean, they, they may have an abusive parent, they may be homeless, they may have an immigrant parent who can't read all the papers that are sent home, they may have a learning disability like dyslexia, or they may just need a tutor to get a math concept they missed. We need more counselors and nurses and family resource advocates, so that teachers have the resources to go to when they recognize these problems in their students. And I'll certainly push for this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, on behalf of Hannah Graves, same question. How would you, or how would Ms. Graves work with district staff to encourage and promote fairness and equity for all of the district's students?
Yes, I think one thing I've talked to Rory about is, we provide what's called cultural competency. We all have our internal biases, but we all need to know how to work within them and also make sure they don't affect certain reactions. In terms of like, when you talk about when a kid is missing school or struggling, what's the first question a teacher asks? And those questions usually differentiate between when the kid's a white kid or a kid of color, or who the parents are. And I personally experienced this growing up in this district as the son of two parents, one black, one being white. And the different reactions that we got when my father walks in versus when my mother walks in, for, you know, me out in the middle of three, you know, those, two brothers. All of us experienced this, every time our parents ever come in for us. And I don't see that really changing that much since we went to high school, out here and, or in middle school and elementary. And I was four-year-old when I was entering school out here as well. So, and we still, those things are still kind of prevalent these days. We like to think we've improved, but I think it's like, lesser of two evils is still evil. So there needs to be a real talk about cultural competency in here, and really educate teachers on how to experience and react to these nuances between different kids, kids that come from different backgrounds, so they really know that they're really treating these kids fairly and not having these internal reactions to these, and discipline the kids more often and more, or for a longer, more harsher. And that means that there really, a discussion needs to have and training needs to happen on top of that.
Okay, Ms. Cadence, as a school board director, how would you address the concerns that no matter how many levies voters approve, there never seems to be enough money to meet the district's needs? And how can voters be assured their money is being spent wisely?
So when we think about budget stability, I think we need to think about both internal factors and external factors. Internally, we have to be very good stewards of the budget. So Karen mentioned that the budget reflects values. I think there's something else. Budgets need to reflect goals, which I mentioned earlier, we don't have in the district. The goals reflect values. So first off, we need goals, measurable goals, that define important student outcomes, so that when we budget, we can budget very intentionally against those goals and prioritize. And the priority should always be putting students first. We need smaller class sizes. We need support for teachers in the form of professional development to support them in the various new curricular that, materials that they're getting, the new technologies that they're getting. In addition to all of the internal factors that we need to be better aware of the assumptions that we're making in terms of our budget and budgeting against priorities, we need to think externally. We need to be advocating with the state, because there's several flaws in the current state funding formulas that are hurting Edmonds, and that we need to be talking with our state legislators about that. And I've in fact been talking to some of them already about the regionalization factor that Gary mentioned, so that we can do both internal taking care of things, but advocating at the external level to make sure we get enough money for the district.
Ms. Chase, name your top priorities should you be reelected as school board director?
Thank you very much. Well, of course, I think we all have heard that we're hiring a superintendent and that we're passing a bond. And those are our top priorities right now. What I'm really passionate about is ensuring that each student has what they need to succeed. And to do that, we need to be looking at our classrooms. With the recent budget, budget challenges, we know that our teachers, some of our teachers are really struggling and need more supports. So having a stronger connection with the actual classroom needs and how we can make changes to address those is one of the top priorities. And ensuring, one goal, which is overreaching everything, is to make sure that any decision we're making, we reflect on how it is impacting the classroom, because we have many issues that come before us. But centering the needs of our most historically marginalized population must be centering every single decision we make. And that is a passion of mine and is a, one of the super top priorities for the next four years, if the voters choose to return to this position.
Mr. Noble, how will you engage and empower citizens to participate in the school board decision-making process?
Well, this is such an important issue. You know, to start, we talked about doing a superintendent search. One of the very first things that happens in a superintendent search is we have focus groups and online survey of all the different stakeholders to develop what the priorities and what the requirements are for the superintendent. That's gonna happen. I've always been a strong proponent for involving the communities for our run. Issue, we had two large citizen slash staff committees. We had one that looked at our enrollment problems, which decided we really needed to move fifth grade to middle school. And we had the one that Lisa was on that looked at all our schools, decide which ones absolutely need to be replaced. We, previously, when we've done boundary changes, we've had major citizens committees to figure out all the boundaries and how they change, because these are the people that are affected by boundary changes on schools. So it's very important to, for us, to allow citizens and stakeholders in any decision to be part of the decision-making process.
And Mr. Johnson, same question for you, for Ms. Graves. How will you engage and empower citizens to participate in the school board decision-making process?
One thing Rory talked about, about getting more engagement in the community is one, finding ways on, like, I think Ms. Chase mentioned before, new venues, new places, new schedules. I think the school board meetings is at 6:30 every time. Now, all parents can make that, because people work night shifts, or people work till nine. So you can't expect parents to begin off their day jobs all the time if it's a set schedule and there's not only a few options on when we can meet. So we need to find new innovative ways to engage to bring more people in the process. Because that brings more engagement, it brings more accountability, and it brings more ideas. So I think we need to make sure that not only do we say disadvantage just to make our attendance look up, go up, but we want to make sure like, come in and provide citizens, constituents, and parents more time to talk and present to the school board members, more than like one minute or how long, you know, they get to talk to somebody, more, just way more avenues on how to provide, it's a responsibility of the school board to just take the time to listen and to read written statements and do that, and, you know, keep us, you know, or keep them more, more busy as well. Because that's the responsibility that people sign up, we all sign up, or they pay.
This question is for Ms. Honeywell. Again, how would you work with district staff to encourage and promote fairness and equity for all of the district's students?
So I'd love to start. Typically, when I'm faced with a problem, the first thing I like to do is do some research. So I would start by looking at other school districts that are effective. What are they doing well? What can we do and what can we replicate without recreating the wheel? I would also look to build partnerships. I think there's some great social service organizations, right, in our own community that we could work with to learn and understand the issues. I would work to fund things like pay for play, paying for ASP cards, paying, having extra instruments for band, paying for class fees, so that we can help kids that are from income-qualified families be able to access the variety of programs we offer in our schools. I would look to increase our diversity in our teachers and administration, so that when I, when I'm a student of color, I see faces that are talking with me and working with me that look like me. And that's in every form of diversity. And I would continue to support the Teachers of Color program that the board has begun, and look for sensitivity training for our teachers and administration, so that they can be fully aware of how we may be unknowingly excluding students and families. Thank you.
We're almost to the end, but this is, this is a question that we received from one of our attendees here, and I'm, because this will go to all of you, we'll just go in order. Let's start on the end with Ms. Cadence, and then just, I'll let you just roll through. If anybody needs me to repeat the question, feel free. This is, current research in the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that middle and high school students start school no earlier than 8:30, 8:00 a.m. In our district, the high school starts at 7:20 a.m. How do you plan to address this issue? So Ms. Cadence, would you like to start?
Yes, I agree with that research, having watched my children go through their series of developmental stages. And other districts have successfully done this. The challenges to it have to do with the after-school programs, they have to do with the bus schedules, which are very carefully orchestrated to stagger the buses throughout the day. I think we have to go to this community engagement piece and the shared decision-making piece and work with our parents, work with all of the pieces that would be involved and, and all of the, it's a domino effect of all the various factors that would be, have to be taken into account. I think it's something that the board should have a study session on, should start looking at closely in terms of how is it working in other districts and how could it work in Edmonds? Because I do think it would be beneficial to our students.
Okay, just go ahead, go. Okay, sorry. All right. Well, again, as I mentioned before, when I have a problem, I'm gonna go out and research it. So I'm gonna look for other school districts that have already done this, have, what kind of changes have they made in their start times? We know that there are school districts in the area that have made some changes. So I would look to see how they did that. I would also engage parents, because this is a big life change. It may seem simple to move something 50 minutes, but in the world of things, as Nancy mentioned, it's a busing, it's meals, it's after-school programs. But I can tell you that my son, who's a senior in high school, would be advocating for this desperately. He would probably say, this is the first task that I should do, should I be elected? But, so collating all of that information, right, the other school districts and the examples they have given us, the parents' input, I would work hard to at least look at and consider it, because I do believe that it is, I do support the research that says that we do need a later start time for our middle school and high school kids.
I agree with everything that's said. I would love to move high school start time later. We had a committee two years ago that studied this, studied it really extensively. One of the major districts that was successful at doing this is Seattle. And they were able to do it because they give all of their high school students bus passes or metro passes, because all their high schools are serviced by metro. Our high schools are not serviced by public transportation. And so that solution doesn't work for us. Therefore, we have to bus the kids. We have buses running from about 6:30 in the morning till 9:30 for our latest elementary start times. Our, that's 150 buses that are running straight from 6:30 to 9:30 to get our students to school. And 6:30 buses are the ones that take the high school kids. But it still takes from 6:30 to 9:30 to transport about 10,000 students to school on 150 buses. If we're to move high school start times to a later point, we still have to be running buses from 6:30 to 9:30 to get the kids to school, so somebody else would have to have that 6:30 slot. And I don't think many elementary parents want their kids out of the, on the street at 6:30 either. So either we would have to have a lot more buses, or we would have to trade start times, which is very, very difficult. So most we can do is perhaps move it 10 or 15 minutes one direction, but that doesn't really solve the issue.
As Ben mentioned, we have had study sessions and extensive research into what's going on with, with other schools, districts that are doing this successfully. And I'm always an advocate that transportation does not drive education, however, the fact is, we do have over 10,000 miles driven by our bus drivers every day on our buses. So it is, it is a consideration in changing the start time. We're going to have to have an ongoing look at this, and we need more support from the community in seeing how we can, what impacts are acceptable and what aren't. What do we do if we're gonna move the, move the high school later? Where do we keep that up with the, with the elementary students? If high school ends up ending later, how does that impact the high school students who need to care for their younger siblings? Those are considerations that we need to be looking at really, really carefully. And as we continue on looking at study sessions on this again, I'm gonna invite everyone to please participate and share your thoughts. Because frankly- to please participate and share your thoughts, because frankly, my son is not in school anymore, and so I want to hear from people who are in school. So you're going to be invited to participate in this, because I agree with the later start time for high school students.
I think, I already call corrected, I think the 7:20 or 7:10 a.m. start time was formed based on employment and like, you know, to court, you know, with rush hour and what time people would go to work, so you could get their kids to school and go to work. And that was like, what, 30, 40 years ago? Or a long time, 50 years ago, I think, when they started doing that, and times have changed. The work schedules are a lot different. I think we need to be able to engage with employers and talk about like, what is really acceptable in terms of like, making sure that there's a priority for, make sure parents can get their kids to school if this changes. So we really need to also engage with employers and businesses around here, particularly large employers, like even a lot of parents that live here that work at BOM. And like, you know, because the nine-to-five work schedules was arbitrary in its first place, so like, in terms of like, the way the economy is now, work schedules is all around the place, I think we need to be able to adapt with that. And I think employers need to be able to adapt with that if the school's going to change. So we have to have that engagement with the businesses and of course, all these other ideas sound, sound great as well, because it is a hard thing to do. Seattle has different, it's different bus and metro infrastructure, we don't have that, so we have to make sure there's a whole lot of different ideas and new ideas possibly there, and we need that engagement.
All right. We're going to come to the closing statements. And Mr. Johnson, do you think it's fair that since you had a two-minute statement in the beginning, that maybe you had your statement, or do you want to have an additional one?
I think I'd like, no, I'll be fair.
No, I want to, if you want a statement, well, I just wanted to start at this end, and I didn't know if you wanted to reiterate what you said before, if you wanted to go for it.
I'll say something, I mean, like I said, Roy's an amazing person, obviously, that's why I'm here, to fill in for her, and I'll take that upon myself, because I'm supporting her. So I take it kind of respectfully, even in the audience, is like, why do you want to support someone who's challenging and come in to do this? Because I think we just need something new, need new perspective, and we need to have new ideas added to the school board directors to build, to force a path forward. Times are changing, and I think we, that's what we need, what is needed here. This is why I've seen Roy firsthand do the work for the change. I've seen him go to Olympia to advocate for gun safety. We have a lot, you know, better gun laws in the state, particularly because of the work that Roy's done. And I've seen him do it in the winter, in December, volunteer gathering signatures on a ferry in the wind to people, you know, do that. So I know what kind of heart she has, and that is, I guess, that's why I'm supporting her, and that's why I'm willing to come here and try and hopefully represent her well enough to show you like what kind of person she is. And I'd be proud to have her on the school board representing me and making, helping make decisions for when my kids go through this district.
Thank you. Ms. Chase, go ahead, and then we'll just go down the line.
Thank you so much. Again, my name's Karen Chase, and I'm running for reelection to the District One position. These past four years have been a great learning experience and very exciting to face the challenges that we have faced, the challenges in the district, and celebrate the successes. I see this as a very exciting time to be in, in education policy decision-making, because we have changes going on at the state and national level, and we can impact those, those changes and how they affect children in the classrooms. I am passionate about making sure that whatever we do, we are providing equitable access and the resources, so every single student can have what they need to be successful and no matter what pathway they choose. I would be honored to have your support to return to the school district to continue this work, but I would also be more honored if, no matter what happens, that you all stay incredibly engaged in this entire process for the children of the district. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for the sponsors for holding this forum. You know, although this has been a challenging year with the reduction in local levy, I think we should take a step back and look at what a great school district we really have. We're a wonderfully diverse district with over 100 languages spoken. Although we are more diverse than state averages, the state statistics show that we have more ninth grader students on red contract to graduate, we have higher English language growth, and higher math growth than state averages. More of our teachers have master's degrees, and their average years' experience exceeds state averages. Although we inherited many schools quickly and cheaply built in the seventies, we're well on our way to replacing them with state-of-the-art schools designed for 21st century learning. We've addressed the technological inequities of our low-income students and students of color by providing Chromebook computers to every student of our first grade. Edmond School District is an outstanding district and one you should be proud of. If you have any interest, I urge you to become more involved in our schools, attend school board meetings, volunteer to be on district committees, visit your local school and inquire what volunteer opportunities might be available. Even being a lunchtime buddy once a week can make a huge difference for a student. My phone number is on my brochure in the back, and if you ever have any questions, concerns about our district, whether it has to do with the election or not, please give me a call. I'd love to hear from you. Thank you so much for attending, and I appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
So thank you, Teresa, and our Mont Lake Terrace hosts, for this wonderful opportunity to discuss important issues for the voters and Edmond School District. And I hope that you have found this evening valuable, a valuable use of your time. So I love kids. It's as simple as that, and I have a heart for service. While my kids were in elementary school, I was the classroom party mom who planned the harvest party, the friendship party, the winter celebration, because I could do that while still working full-time. In middle school, I volunteered as the, when my kids were in middle school, I volunteered as a team liaison and helped with spaghetti dinners for the boys' basketball team. And while my kids were in high school and still are in high school, I've served on the Booster Club for the sports boosters, and I've supported the canned food drives and the school supplies drives. And then since April of 2018, I've had this pleasure of serving on the 2020 Facilities and Bond Committee, and that gave me the opportunity to visit every elementary and middle school in our district. And I saw just how important it is that we pass this 2020 bond that continues the financial support of the 2014 bond. I really can't stress that enough. So why am I running? Well, I want to bring a fresh look at how we help our homeless students, as I mentioned earlier. I want to see them succeed. I want to pass that 2020 bond to rebuild our schools and alleviate overcrowding, so that a positive learning environment can be there for our kids. And I really am excited about increasing and looking for ways to increase the diversity in our teaching and administrative staff, so that our diverse student body feels welcome and reflective of our community. And what I would share with you is that running for school board has been an honor. I've heard of the concerns of a grandmother, that her kids don't have enough, her grandkids don't have enough time to eat lunch during school. I've also heard from a judge who felt that the kids that he comes in contact with don't have enough knowledge about everyday physics, civics, sorry. And I've met a mother who was concerned that our teachers aren't held accountable to pushing our kids to a higher standard. And I've met a husband whose wife is a teacher, struggling with the pressures of teaching to a test rather than to learn. And so these are just a few of the stories that I have been honored to hear in my short time in running for this, in this campaign. And I would be honored to be in a position in December to take steps to investigate those stories and work towards improvement. There are so many stories still to be heard. I would really appreciate your vote this November. Thank you.
I love the Edmond School District. I know and care about every school in the district the same way a teacher knows and cares about their, every one of their students. When I joined the district staff in 1999, there was a real sense of urgency around student learning in the district, and our outcomes reflected excellence. Since then, much more recently, that sense has waned, and our outcomes have in fact not been keeping pace. So rather than comparing our achievement, our graduation rate, our other student outcomes to the state, which is not a good comparison, because there's a far, many more, higher percentage of low-income kids in the state than in our district, a better comparison is to Everett right up the street, which has very similar student demographics to us. When you look at our achievement compared to their achievement just this past year, they exceeded us in both math achievement and English language arts achievement, and their graduation rate is much higher than ours. In addition, when you look at our graduation rate for the last three years, it is absolutely flat. We have great teachers, great students, and great parents in this district, and we can be doing better. We need strong leadership, we need measurable goals to give us focus and directionality, and we need to make sure we're holding the district accountable for using resources wisely and with intentionality. My experience really matters. I know how district systems work, I know how the budgets are built, I know how to support teachers, I know how to keep kids safe. I will be able to hit the ground running on day one if I'm elected to the school board. The teachers and certificated staff know me, they know my work ethic, they know my ability to work collaboratively to solve problems, and they know my passion for trying to do what's best for kids. And their trust is evident, because they've given me their endorsement for this particular position. And just today, the Everett Herald reaffirmed their endorsement of me for position five, and I'd like to just share a quote, it's going to be real quick. Cadence, regardless of her past employment with the district, appears especially keen to hold the district accountable for its budgeting practices and its academic rigor, and that is true. So let's work together to make the Edmond School District the best it can be to ensure that all our kids can be successful in schooling and life. Thank you.
I would like to thank all of the candidates for coming, all of you for coming and sticking with us, and over time, that I think it's worth it, because we had a lot of good dialogue and good information shared. We do need to hustle our way out of here, because the library is actually staying up later for us. So we need to go. But thank you again. Thank you. [applause]